Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay, we call the community of Allen County Commission to order regular sessions July 9th, 2016. Members' President Darryl Baker, Phoebe Harless, and Charles France. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our regular session meeting that was held on June 9th, 2016?
Sure.
On paper, ah, okay. In your public comment, we don't have anything, but Flemis, you've signed in.
Yeah. I just, I just want to be put on the agenda next meeting, I guess I'd be.
Oh, with the four?
Fourth.
Fourth, yeah.
Fourth of next month.
Okay.
If you would, that's probably all I got.
Do you just want under discussion possible action, is this regarding the Fourth of July?
Yes, yes ma'am, it is.
Somehow, ah...
You can't figure that one out, do you? Because that's all new.
Okay. All right, undiscussed discussion and possible action, we have Rick McDowell with the Farming Protection Board.
You all were a member of one of these issues when we were trying to get, the previous one, when we were talking about trying to do that, was this thing about soils and the fact that the federal government of El State would give us money for certain soils, but not for others. And we had this thing about the NE soils, and we had tried to get them declared locally significant, which put those soils into a new category, and Commission President was kind enough to send a letter to the state conservationists. Lewis asked me to care.
It did, you got it.
It did.
What's that?
It did immediately. I mean, the letter went out and he replied and said, "Yes, we agree." President Harless. And so now, in Lincoln County soils that are known as NE soils, E, N, L, C, I'm not sure I'd say this, I don't know what kind of word it is, are going to, will be considered locally important soils. And that will help with future matches that will come down from there.
So they should match it with specific, ah...
Specific kinds of soils, yeah. So that was good. So thank you for joining us.
We'll have to...
We should have started it here.
I don't know about that.
So, that's a real positive thing. The other thing I wanted to share with the Commission about farmland protection is something we've talked about. No, we were trying to get the feds to give us a fifty-fifty match for all these kinds of things. And we weren't willing to do it for everything, and so one of the things the Farming Protection Board has talked about, and we wanted to bring it to the Commission just to see how you thought about this, would be in the future, if we got to some farms where, let's say we weren't getting something that we felt was a good response from the feds in Morgantown, that we might offer farm owner just a fifty percent match. He'd say, "We would pay what we were going to pay initially, which was fifty percent, and we wouldn't have a match for it." So, they wouldn't be getting necessarily as much money for the easement, but the money that the Farming Protection Board would be putting in would be the same amount.
So, you discussed doing that before you started the process?
We discussed it at some meetings, at some of our meetings. We haven't, we didn't discuss it years ago.
We didn't know it was going to be an issue.
But we didn't know it was going to be an issue. And the other, the other thought was there are some funding streams that are non-federal, land protection trusts and, you know, conservation organizations, that wouldn't be arranged the same kind of way, but we might be able to get some money from them, not necessarily a fifty percent match, and we put in our fifty percent, so we might do that. But it wouldn't necessarily be matching those instances with federal dollars. But we thought it was important before we started moving in that direction to sort of see how you all, what you thought about that, whether it wouldn't bring us as much money totally, might not bring us any federal money, but what the county put into it would change, we'd still be putting the same amount.
Well, yeah, and actually, you know, I think there probably would be properties like that. I think you need to concentrate on the properties that you might get a match.
Exactly, exactly, yes.
And that's the changing of the classifications, look how far I was thinking.
I think it could help us in some, in some places. It seems like these NE soils are mainly river bottom soils. And so if we were, of course, most good farmland is river bottom, but it might be that, oh, let's say instead of on the gaijin, we're on the mud, looking at someplace, it might be that there weren't any of those NE soils on the mud. So it might not help there, but we...
Do you have any prospective easements?
At this point, we don't. We're going to start, we have some brochures about it that we need to start getting out to people to try to bring them in. But, you know, we're sort of trying to get our head around some different ways we could approach this in order to do some easements. And that was one of them, that we, you know, like you said, we would try to match with the feds. But if we couldn't match with the feds, we look for other organizations, and that fifty percent that the county would give, we would do that if we didn't get money.
We would.
We will, we'll do that.
Now, when you find another farm to do easement, you'll come to us?
We would, the way we had thought about doing it in the past, and we'll do it however we want, the thought was we, we would all, when we finally got all the ducks in the row and we had this package, we would come to the Commission and say, "Okay, here's this farm, total amount of easement would be X X X, total amount of the Farming Protection Board you put in would be X, total amount from other sources would be X. We'd like your approval."
If this, if the property was sold later on, the easement is still in force?
The easement is still in force.
Right, okay.
It's perpetual. I'm not sure what perpetual means, though. I mean, I know what it means, but, good, okay. I want to do a quick update, two other things. One is the Free Wednesdays program that you all help support. We just finished the fourth Free Wednesday, and we've averaged forty-eight people, which is pretty good so far. I mean, we don't know what the weather's going to be as we move forward, but we've had forty-eight people out there, you know, lots of kids having lots of fun. We've also had churches and other groups provide the lunches for that, so that's been...
Tri River is busing for you?
Tri River is busing. We haven't had as many people on the buses. And we've had a couple this last Wednesday, I don't know what happened, I haven't had a chance to talk to Tri River, but they were pretty late picking kids up, so I don't know how many we lost. And then they didn't come to take them home, which was a little disconcerting. Fortunately, there were only two, so I was able to squeeze them in my car and get them back home.
You're going to check on the bus?
With Tri River, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm going to check.
We don't want kids left anywhere.
No, no, we weren't going to let them, you know, if they didn't twelve on the bus, I don't know what we would have done.
Do you think calling Tri River?
We would have been calling Tri River, "Where are you guys?" And the other thing I wanted to do was just give you an update, I don't know, some of you noticed about the Left Fork, where we had major high water issues, not when the rest of this area had high water, but a week ago, Monday, was the wall of water that came down. The Dog Bone area and Volger area, and picked up a lot of these peat modules, did damage under people's homes where it tore out the plumbing, also did damage to the electrical systems that are needed for making the peat modules work. So, it's both a problem because the systems aren't working, but it's also a public health problem because in some of these places now, there's nothing under the house to take septic to somebody's sake. So we've got septic.
I'm going to talk about this at the end of the meeting.
Okay, so, so my plan is to be there, to get into the watershed tomorrow and sort of do a quick inquiry.
So you don't really know how many were affected or what it's standard?
Lloyd McVey, who was the person who did the installations on most of the last, well, all of the last heat systems, was in the watershed the last Friday looking. And he said he thought between twenty-five and maybe thirty-five systems were impacted. And his feeling was, and I'm not sure if I haven't looked at it, his feeling was that the septic tank itself, which is underground, could be pumped and saved, but the heat systems were so full of mud that it would be more cost effective just to replace the heat modules than try to get everything out and then put the peat in there.
Do you have to put that in the filter system, the filter that goes in it? They were talking about that today, FEMA people, that they thought it may cause more, just to, they had to replace the filter and then it would be just to redo the whole.
There's a fil, there is a filter in the septic tank itself.
See, I don't think, I don't understand them, and I don't think they would...
Heat systems outside.
This, you got, you got your septic tank, and you have a pump tank that pumps the treated waste into the heat modules, and then from the heat modules, it goes through UV light, and then into, back into the creek. So it's really everything from this, those two tanks on, probably the pumping, the pump tank, to include, I'm going to check.
So you're going to go over to your board tomorrow?
I'm going to go and look and try to figure this out.
I mean, that's what started all of the maintenance.
Association, I think at some point, definitely, because they're, they're a nonprofit that was set up to sort of do the maintenance. This is all sort of very unusual from all sorts of points of view.
I definitely want to talk to you about it, FEMA, but so...
I'll try to be prepared. You'll be there about that, right?
I'll be there, I'll, I'll be talking to everybody.
Okay, so, we're going to, we're going to work on it. I also contacted some people from the, what, the Florida, Morgantown, just about. I figured they should know about this whole thing, because they were the funders, and asked them to talk among themselves to see what they thought.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, you're off. Okay, this is drawdown, final drawdown.
The original project is complete. According to my book, it was ten thousand five hundred eighty dollars and twenty-one cents left in the county's accounting to the Department of Baseball Project, and it's drawn down, it's drawn down, they were going to get money to pay a portion of the nappy construction. I say final draw, but when you tell a hundred dollars gone, so the people open the company, they're going to get twenty-eight cents.
This was in from, I mean, you know, basis, since some of the small cities were, and that was Francis Creek, I know. She said Al Hall with Bill, but it wasn't Al Hall with Bill.
No, I believe it was Francis.
Francis Creek, yes. What was that figure again, that, say that for you, Lord?
Ten thousand five hundred eighty dollars and twenty-one cents. And since I'm sort of subject for Region Two, I wasn't sure what to do, so I brought multiple copies, so I certainly have extra copies.
I usually initial, send it to me once they get it back, but, I mean, whatever.
Well, like I say, I did not know.
I guess the motion we approved would be the best, the final call, the final project, the first walk presentation.
There's usually, right? Just a little more, it's all been, yeah. We're all in perfect.
And that's all I had, was you had a question about any water problems.
She was.
That takes care of our part.
Yes, yes, yes. Now, I believe you've done a final draw on the small city.
Yeah, yeah, see, that's, that's one of the reasons we question things, because the question came up that those extra monies being sent back on the small city, why did we have to pick up our Brooklyn?
Okay.
Things like that. And it was addressed by Region Two for their satisfaction, not particularly ours. I think it was yours, and it was the other place. It seems really hard to me, but if you know, ten thousand dollars locally, it'd be a lot more than sending thirty-five thousand, about thirty-seven thousand. It's mostly blocked.
Yes.
A bunch of it is a little bit public, but I'm looking at it.
For informational purposes, the short bend road area, we had also had money left over out of the R M S, um, in Francis Creek. And we asked the R M S, because the creek allowed us to use more of the upper part of the short bend. There's seventy customers up there, I don't know if...
They're still on Francis Creek?
It's across the mountains from Francis Creek, but yeah, it's the same general, you get, you get to it from Little Hard Say. So just, I mean, I don't know if it's fully approved yet, but I want to let you know, you know, we're still working on that. Thank you.
We have no other things business, under the new business. There's one thing I want to talk about just for a second, the new business. The last item under the new business is to approve the upfront calls for the flood cleanup for the affected areas that Rick had mentioned over in Dog Bone. That's something that FEMA, we will pay for the dumpsters to clean up, however we get it all figured out. And then FEMA will reimburse a hundred percent back, so...
Just, we need to count the money, or how much we're talking about, so...
Well, anything under twenty-five thousand, we don't have to bid it out. So they've reassured me that it will be under twenty-five thousand, and so they want to go ahead and get started. There's not a whole lot, Rick, you can chime in, he's been with me through this week process, two week process. There's not a whole, whole lot of debris over there, it's my understanding, that they think a couple dumpsters. I'll know more tonight, because I've got to get back with Alan Holder, who's working with some people, and trying to figure out. We had originally thought that we wouldn't even use the dumpsters, because you have to pay somebody to watch the dumpster, the whole time it's up in there. If we go into it, Duval, you pay somebody around the block to go and watch it. So we were going to just have, have them put it out to the road, and then have somebody just go up and pick it up, and do it that way. But now they're saying today, when we met with FEMA, that the road of through Dog Bone isn't in shape for big trucks to go up through there, because it just killed the road.
And they're hiring an employee, or part-time employee, to monitor it, and then FEMA will reimburse the number one center for those hours and the miles that that person puts on?
This is what we think, and I'm not sure to say that they're going to put, there was, the fire department was destroyed pretty much. They're, I think they're going to have to find a new location and build a new fire department over there. So there's a lot of debris at the fire department, so they're going to take a dumpster, and they've already pretty much got all of it out. So they're going to take a dumpster over there, let them put all the stuff in it. So maybe the solid waste people can hit the dumpster, let them fill it up, remove it, so we won't have to get into a situation of it sitting there. And then they were going to put one at the mouth of Dog Bone and have certain hours. We're hoping Saturday, but I'm not sure that that's called.
That's what they were discussing when I left, you had already gone, and they were discussing Saturday from, in fact, they had a flyer put out that Francis was supposed to take, or that Richard was supposed to take that, or post house to house, that was going to be from nine to five at the, can we, it's going to be a Mud River Fire Department.
The only one?
No, I think they were going to put one down at Dog Bone too, but I think that, that way, the fire department could monitor the one at the fire department, and he could do the one down at Mud Bone, because some of the vulture area was affected too.
The cost of dumpsters, it's going to be the same, I mean, they're not going to jack the price or anything.
I heard them, I wasn't in, hold on, conversation, but I did eavesdrop a little bit. Five hundred dollars a dumpster, and then it was real low of a tonnage, and it wasn't going to take that many. They were talking maybe five to ten, maybe. So it's not that much damage up and down to that area, but...
I mean, it was, there was a lot of damage, but as far as the debris, there wasn't, it seems to be a lot of...
Is that usually what we pay for dumpsters, is five hundred, and then we like send them out along the roads or something?
I, I don't know.
What was that?
I don't know, I don't know the exact amount of dumpster. There's a set tonnage charge.
I know, the last one we had at Duval, we had about twenty thousand dollars in dumpsters there. Yeah, I don't remember.
You said about eight hundred dollars, but you had one set, and you paid the tonnage charge, you're going right to the tonnage, yes.
Okay, well, see, I just didn't know.
I got a message the other day on Facebook, wanting to know if the Fire Protection Authority could supply a dumpster over there. And I answered them the best way I knew how. I said, "No, I'm sorry, we can't," because we had to apply for a grant for the dumpster, and every penny that is spent on the dumpster, the money comes from the grant. And I said, "Other than, we don't have any money to spend at all." And if, year to year, if that grant's approved and we get a dumpster, that's the only way we get them. And I suggested that they call DEP, or it was the local waste hauler, so I said they could get a dumpster. But, you know, we always get our dumpsters to you all, and you get a certain amount of money, and that exact amount of money that has to be spent on them, and that's once a year. And this year, we even had to come back, so, you know, they did contact me and ask me about it, so...
Well, it was declared, was it Sunday?
July 1st, it was declared an individual and public assistance, declared disaster, yes.
So they'll reimburse us for them, we just have to keep, you know...
They normally run about eight hundred dollars for the time you get them dropped, picked up, and into the landfill.
So that sounds about...
Eight hundred to a thousand, that's about what they average.
I think they did say five hundred for me, so I think that's...
I think that's, yeah, I think so.
Mike Holder on that subject, you had sort of right, but the dumpster cleanup this year, since we have two trash haulers in the county now, DEP is requiring us to bid, do a bid between them. So, we're supposed to have our funds the twenty-second of this month. And then we've got to go out to bid between those two, because they won't, just let us say, use this one, go like we did in the past, where we only had one hauler, so we're probably now looking at the first of September before we see the first cleanup. And that will be in reference to what we're going to do the first one. Because of this stuff, and we wanted to just swap into the county.
Did they, they cut out the one at Allen Creek? They got one still, Ben, Ben still, and we're counting.
Ranger and Hart.
Ranger, okay, so, so we have cut back a few now and some, but the, when I got contacted by Facebook, I just told them, I said, "We don't have extra money. If we want a dumpster, we have to submit a grant for it," and that's exactly what it's given to us for.
Our director just got her April paycheck. That's how far we're behind on, um...
Okay, let's approve this business, and then we can talk more, and then just a handout. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the new business?
Sure.
Okay, I'll second, on paper, on, okay. Since we are on the pod, as we said, this happened June thirtieth, which was last Monday. We met with FEMA and the Office of Emergency Services Tuesday and today. I've got a lot of information and a lot of questions, don't I? Okay, as of now, today they have got, they started setting up a disaster recovery area of the worst old fire department in Al Hall with Bill there, that's where they're going to have it. Today, they were in there just kind of getting everything set up. Tomorrow, they will officially open at seven a.m., be open from seven to seven. And they wanted people to go online and register. I think there's been thirty-five individual assistance applications filled out. I think there'll be more, maybe some people just didn't, but they said they would help them to do that when they come in. There's going to be, I think, a pretty large staff of federal people there to assist. So tomorrow, I hope people start going in and they'll help them with the actual FEMA application. They did this, the online thing, but when they go in, they can actually sit down, talk to them about it, go out and inspect, and start the whole, whole process. There's fifteen residents are eligible for individual housing assistance programs. That means that they had substantial damage. A couple, was it three, we think for sure will have to be demolished.
Two destroyed, fourteen with major damage, six with minor, and seven that were affect, under their term, seven affected houses. And just that one were...
And there was fifty thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars that FEMA has already spent over there. I think they, and I have to say how much the fire department over there really, I mean, they took off with this thing. And they were flooded. It was three or four feet in the fire department, but they really, I mean, that's kind of been the hub, and everybody's dropping off and picking up, and they've done an excellent job. And so has our emergency service at the, I don't know, my center. They got stuff over there immediately. And, you know, I went over, and they had everything. I mean, I was impressed with all the cleaning supplies, water, diapers, truffles, they had really taken care of it, so... And thanks, I want to thank Rick too, for, he's been leading me through this. I know sometimes it gets tiger baited, but this has been, this has been a process, and we're not, we're just getting started. And we've got Rick McDowell on board here to help us with our water stream. That was really, a lot of those were really damaged, so... We have this, we have some fact sheets here, Sean, if you want.
They were supposed to email them to me this morning, but they haven't got back to me, so I'm, I'm in touch with Francis, so...
Okay, here's, here's the rundown. And here's a fact sheet that FEMA gave us to give out to you, and Sean, if you want to go over tomorrow, they'll be, they'll all be there starting at seven, and they can answer any questions.
Cool.
I think they're running some of the news stations and stuff.
Seven a.m., okay.
All right, Rick, is there anything else I'm forgetting to say about that?
Well, that FEMA fact sheet on the private roads and bridges, you guys know we've been doing that bridge thing in, in, in Lincoln County. Well, now that we have an individual assistance declaration, FEMA now will inspect destroyed private roads, which are not covered under the public assistance, and private bridges. They'll go in, inspect them for their damage, and they'll assess what the damage is, and there is money available, not as a loan, but as a grant, to help those bridges get fixed. So anything that was damaged from the twenty-seventh of June, which was the day that that happened, I suppose, that last Monday?
Yeah.
Monday before last, when that happened, from the twenty-seventh until, I think, they haven't closed it out yet, but I think, I think officially it's been closed out when they made the declaration on the first of July. So if any bridges or roads were destroyed or affected during that time, they can apply online or by that one eight-hundred number, go to the DRC, the Disaster Recovery Center, and they will talk to them about how to get that process started. So that's, that's a change from last summer, when we didn't have any public assist, we didn't have any individual assistance. Declaration was all public, so that money didn't come last year to Lincoln County. It'll be there this year to help those folks that were affected this year.
I think they'll even help them too, follow the applications, if they don't...
There were people there today, this afternoon, when I was there, actually coming in, they hadn't applied yet. They, they did the application form there, and then sent them into the office to start talking to the folks about their... to start talking to the folks about their individual cases. They're, they're already over there.
Do you have any?
No, I was just going to echo what the president said as far as the way it was coordinated in response to this disaster. You know, I guess to me, to go through enough, I'm going to get a little better at doing it. We saw that, as has been mentioned in the paper, you know, I, I was really impressed with, you know, usually we get a lot more calls, or I guess the president did, but I, I do appreciate the job everyone's doing, the fire departments, and all the people that helped. And I, I also want to take time to congratulate Rick on his Flint Plains Manager of the Year position for the state. And I think one of the reasons that happened is, is he also does what he's talking about now, and I think that really, with his prior experience, working all the way back to Katrina and things like that, and I think you were involved in some of that when you confirmed that. And, you know, I, but that, that really shows you how experience can help you in these type things, and, and I, but I do appreciate the job you've done, and I'm glad you received the state's recognition for that job. But that's all I.
There's one other thing I want to mention, I had that on my list. Rick knows we appreciate you telling all the time. I was on the phone with him half the day Sunday talking about this, so. We also want to mention Guy Browning's office. I want to congratulate you and the rest of your staff, you passed the state monitoring purpose here, so.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, I don't have anything else. Okay, if not, we need a motion to adjourn until August the fourth.
Somebody.
Okay, I'll second. Owen Weber, on.
All right.